With Pastor Rob Whitner of Generation Church. Pastor Rob, are you here? Okay. He's going to do our prayer for us and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand. Pastor, thanks for doing this for us.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
Fine. How about you? Let us pray. Father, I pray that you give these men your wisdom to govern and to lead. Give them the understanding of the times they need to know what the city of Goldsboro needs to do. Give them an understanding heart to adopt ordinances, resolutions, established policies, programs, procedures to govern the city of Goldsboro. Give them courage, Father, to do the hard things that are necessary. And, Lord, give them your perspective on governing and allow them to see as they've never seen and understand as they've never understood. And finally, Lord, and ultimately, may they glorify you by their lives and their leadership. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Yep.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Robberay.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Ason.
Here. We're all here. For all, for those of you who might have an agenda at our work session, we voted to revise the agenda a little bit. We have a, at the work session, we appointed a new mayor pro temp. Mr. David Hamm is going to fill out Councilmember Foster's term for this year, as well as be the mayor pro temp for 2018. And that was voted on at our work session. So Councilmember Hamm has, needs to be sworn in, so we're just going to take this time to swear him in real quick. So Melissa, Councilmember Hamm, if y'all do that.
I'm here, Mr. Gilbert. Your question is, I'm going to be asked to make, I would say, my name is Solomon Square.
I'm sorry.
And I will support and maintain.
I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution involves that the state must rely on.
And the Constitution involves.
State must rely on.
State must rely on.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As mayor pro temp.
As mayor pro temp.
And the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
City of Goldsboro.
I'm so happy to be here.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. All right, our next action is the approval of the minutes for the August 7, 2017 meeting.
Luke, approve.
Say.
Any discussion? All favoriters, right hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Our next presentation, we have a resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Gary Whaley as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than thirty-five years. So Gary, I'm, where is Gary? I know he's here. So Gary, you just sit there, man, I'm going to read this and struggle through it, and then you can come up and we'll, and we'll give you this. I've got to put my glasses on to do it. All right. So resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Gary Whaley as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than thirty-five years. Gary retires on December 1, I thought it was December 31st. This is like sooner than I thought. As fire chief with the Goldsboro Fire Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than thirty-five years of service. Gary began his career on August 11, 1982 as a firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department in the city of Goldsboro. On April 27, 1994, Gary was promoted to fire engineer with the Goldsboro Fire Department. On February 12, 1997, Gary was promoted to fire captain with the Goldsboro Fire Department. On April 29, 1998, Gary was promoted to assistant fire chief for training with the Goldsboro Fire Department. On November 3, 1999, Gary was promoted to assistant fire chief for operations with the Goldsboro Department. On July 1, 2009, Gary was promoted to fire chief with the Goldsboro Fire Department where he has served until his retirement. Gary has proven himself to be dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro to express in Gary Chief Whaley their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro, we will comment, number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Gary's tenure with the city of Goldsboro. We offer Gary our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force effect from this to twentieth day, November 2017. Offer this for adoption.
So moved. Say.
Any discussion? All favoriters, raise your right hand. Resolution's passed. All right, Gary, come on, here comes the fun part.
So I do want to comment one minute on Gary. I don't know who else is going to comment on Gary. It looks like Scott's getting up and commenting too. But Gary and I, we go back, not only being friends, we go back a long, long way and said, and there's several things I want to say about Gary. The first one is, ever since the Fire Department, and I hate to say this, the Fire Department's always controversial. Because Fire Department are either working or they're doing nothing, I think. They're sitting there, you know, creating hats for lack of a better term. Okay? So they're either really, really hard at it, or they're sort of, and Gary has done a great job in keeping the harmony and the relationships that are at the Fire Department. A lot of the issues could have come up that haven't come up, but he's done a really good job with that. And the other thing Gary's done really good that the citizens really appreciate, he's done a great job with the resources. You know, he wanted a $2 million fire tank, so we told him no, so he went and built it with his firm for a couple hundred thousand, and probably even less than that at this point. I don't remember the final number. But all the things they've trained, they're doing things all the time, and Gary has been at the helm of everything they're doing, trying to just do the best he can of what he's got. And our Fire Department is phenomenal, doing phenomenal work, and a lot of that's because of Gary and his leadership. So I do want to thank you personally and publicly for that. And Scott, you want to say something?
Sure. Let me add a few words. I brought notes. Not that I'll be long, but at least didn't want to forget what I wanted to say. And I would echo a lot of what the mayor has said. I do want to say, tell you, Chief Whaley, I have really enjoyed working with you. You've been a good, reliable someone that I could call. You gave me the truth. Very laid back most of the time, once in a while not, but most of the time, very laid back. Pitches in when needed. There's not a task we could ask the chief to do that he wouldn't be willing to do, ever. And I really appreciate it in all of our employees. A great advocate for his department, but understands the city as a whole, and he understands funding. He understands that as bad as he needs something for his firefighters, the police chief needs something, and the public works director needs something, and our downtown needs something. And I will tell you, it takes time for us as departments to get to where we understand the whole. And Gary, you were there, so I really appreciate that. Again, willing to do whatever's asked, and most importantly to me, you care about people. Whether it's your employees, whether it's the community, whether it's your church, you care about people. I just want to say that matters a lot, and I appreciate that. I do want to publicly thank Chief Whaley. We'll have a chance to say some more about him in the coming days, and I'll have a little more extensive list to add to that. But I want to publicly thank him and his family, some of which are here, for the countless hours on nights and weekends and holidays, and two in the morning, and when it's cold and when it's hot, that you've been out serving this community. It doesn't always happen when it's convenient to you, but you go respond when the need is there, and I want to thank you for that. You've given a lot of years of this service, of service to this community, and you have made a difference. The department is in better shape than when you took the helm as chief, and I want to wish you much success and happiness in your retirement. It is very well deserved, and just thank you, Gary. We'll have more to say later. So Chief, congratulations.
I do want to clarify what this guy said. I don't want y'all feeling all that sorry and crying for Gary, because he did advocate for him, and we did watch some pretty nice fire shots here in his town. He can get his way pretty great, so anyway. Why don't you get on the side? You can probably say nothing, we don't know. Hey.
Gary, I have one thing, and I want to say he's got a special family. He's got to be a special man.
All right. First off, let's, but he's counsel. Mayor Allen.
Now look, don't be getting upset, we're all doing good up here now. Don't be messing up Doc.
It's all great to George's.
Don't worry.
I do want to thank y'all for everything, though. Y'all, y'all been over supported, and, um, I've worked through four city managers, and all of them's been good and bad at times. Right there's the best city manager that ever walked in these doors.
Scott?
Thank you, Gary.
Um, but to the citizens of Goldsboro, thank y'all for supporting the Fire Department and, um, for me, shout. But it's good business.
I appreciate it. Good job.
Thank you, Gary.
Good business.
Thank you, Jeff.
And he's not a dummy.
Yeah, I know. All right. Thank you, Gary. Thanks for everything. Okay, so with that, we have the, next item is the Gold Star Award recipients, and who's handling, ah, there she is. Good evening.
Mayor and city council, how are you?
All right.
I tell you, I worked with Chief Whaley for a long time, and there've been many times I could have choked him, but he got me choked up. The purpose of the Golden Star Award is to recognize city employees for their contribution to the city of Goldsboro. Its primary aim is to award employees for going above and beyond the normal scope of job duties, as well as promoting the organization's values and beliefs of integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and quality of life. The star evaluation should specifically focus on related outputs and accomplishments in customer service, professionalism, problem solving, quality improvement, teamwork, and community partnership. At this time, I would like for the nominees and their, and their supervisors to come forward to present the October 2017 City of Goldsboro Star Award.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Captain Teresa Cox. She was nominated for her continued support of the GPAC program. Since the GPAC program's inception in about four years ago, she has not missed but one call in due to a family emergency. She gives a personal testimony of how her son was tragically taken away. And she tells that story to complete strangers and hopes that just one of those that are under the earshot of that will decide to straighten up and do better. So she is most deserving of this, and congratulations.
Where's your chair?
Where is it?
Burdette's coming. She's coming.
Burdette, you're making, made my heart break a little bit. Shut up, Burdette. She's going to be like, I like y'all, I want my chair. Are you taking pictures? You've got a smile over here.
Well, it's not that cute, and I'll be at the end of it.
Is that your grand?
My granddad.
Well, hey, hey, you need to come get us a picture, will you do that?
You got that nice shirt on, you think you're going to do that?
She wanted me to cheer. I know they're as proud of us as we are, so we want to get the whole family. Are you going, can I get in there with you standing beside me? Get in there. And I'll sit in this way. All right. I did want to take a minute. Another picture, yes, and then. I do want to take a minute, and this is from the bottom heart, because I know what GPAC has meant, I know what it has done. We've got a long way to go, it's like crime in the city. You know that, and we know that. But we do appreciate what you do, what you mean by police property, what you mean by purpose.
Thanks, sir.
You want this one, Chief?
Um, I think I'll take it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is our Captain Theresa Cox. She was nominated for her continued support of the GPAC program. Since the GPAC program's inception in about four years ago, she has not missed but one call in due to a family emergency. She gives a personal testimony of how her son was tragically taken away. And she tells that story to complete strangers and hopes that just one of those that are under the earshot of that will decide to straighten up and do better. So she is most deserving of this, and congratulations.
Where's your chair?
Where is it?
Burdette's coming. She's coming. Burdette, you're making, making my heart break a little bit. Shut up, Burdette. She's going to be like, I like y'all, I want my chair. Are you taking pictures? You've got a smile over here.
Well, it's not that cute, and I'll be at the end of it.
Is that your grand?
My granddad.
Well, hey, hey, you need to come get us a picture, will you do that?
You got that nice shirt on, you think you're going to do that?
She wanted me to cheer. I know they're as proud of us as we are, so we want to get the whole family. Are you going, can I get in there with you standing beside me? Get in there. And I'll sit in this way. All right. I did want to take a minute. Another picture, yes, and then. I do want to take a minute, and this is from the bottom heart, because I know what GPAC has meant, I know what it has done. We've got a long way to go, it's like crime in the city. You know that, and we know that. But we do appreciate what you do, what you mean by police property, what you mean by purpose.
Thanks, sir.
You want this one, Chief?
Um, I think I'll take it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council?
Good evening.
Good evening. This is part of my responsibilities, I really get excited about, Mike, get excited about a lot of things, if y'all know me, but I really enjoy taking the opportunity to recognize those who are above and beyond, and that's what these gentlemen have done. So I'm here just to give a special thanks and recognition to Tim Irving, Thomas Hardy, Samuel Bautista, and Junior Taylor for venturing far outside their normal job responsibilities and duties. Their efforts leading up to and during the process of collecting the DNA samples, I'm bringing this up again, sir, if you don't mind, played an instrumental role in a collective multi-agency effort to help identify remains from the caskets that were displaced during Hurricane Matthew. Their positive attitude, attention to detail, sense of responsibility were instrumental throughout the entire process. But especially the day that the samples were pulled, due to the age of the caskets and potential condition of the corpses, we thought it would take a few days before we could get everything processed. Well, these gentlemen, their combined effort with everyone involved enabled all the samples to be collected within four hours, and we were done and out, and the process was put to an end. So I special thanks these guys throughout the entire process, just have done a phenomenal job. And these are the gentlemen that'll step up when you need a moment, so.
All right. Outstanding.
He's bigger than you are. All right, we got to get here so we can get closer, and I know that they're all going to like this, but we got to have it better, and you got to smile. Oh, I can too.
Yeah.
He cleans up for you, buddy. Jeff, I know you can't get that picture this close.
I got it.
While y'all here, I do want to take a minute. I do know a little bit about what you did. First off, during the flood, I rode by the cemetery, and I saw them pulling the caskets out, and they had, and just then, even then, it was rough. I don't have to tell y'all, but y'all know how bad it was, and I know y'all dealt with that fully once. And then, I know they stayed out while we were trying to figure out what to do with them for a long time, and they did save refrigeration, everybody said, the city knows that. But it was really important to the city and to you guys that these things, that these graves went back, or these people somewhere where somebody could have identified later. I know y'all went to a lot of effort to do that. I also know that I got a letter from the, the state, yeah, they had down here, I got a letter from the funeral home, just commending y'all, because they thought they were going to be here for days, and we got a couple letters to the city of how great a job y'all did. And I hope I pass that on to Rick and just thank y'all, because y'all did a phenomenal job with that, as you do every day for our city. So we do appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Jeff.
Is anybody here from Giving Tuesday? Oh, there you are. Well, let me read this quickly, you just calm down a minute. Okay, Giving Tuesday proclamation. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism where people give whatever they are able to give. Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. Whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy and volunteerism and community service provided by the Arts Council of Wayne County, the Boys and Girls Club of Wayne County, Habitat for Humanity of Goldsboro Wayne, Literacy Connections of Wayne County, Partnership for Children for Wayne County, the Four Day Movement, the United Way of Wayne County, as well as all of the other additional nonprofit service organizations in the city of Goldsboro. Therefore, I check out on the mayor of the city of Goldsboro, I do hereby proclaim November 28, 2017, as Giving Tuesday in the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and call upon all our citizens to join together to give back to the community any way that is personally meaningful. So I think this goes without saying, this is a really good deal. And a lot of really good people are doing a lot of really good things in our city, but there's a lot of need in our city, and I think we've got to keep working on it. And you can comment in a minute.
I will.
All right. All right, I'll just want to.
All right. First of all, thank you for the proclamation. This means a lot. I love starting these meetings with good news. This is always wonderful. I like coming to the meetings and seeing people who have done good things in the community to be recognized. And as you know, there are a lot of nonprofit organizations in this county, in the city, that do a lot of good for a lot of people. And we're not the only city that has, that experiences that. All across the world, there, it's people like us, on the ground, boots on the ground, working hard every day to make a difference in their communities. So the Tuesday after, yeah, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving has officially been named Giving Tuesday worldwide. It is a worldwide movement that so far has raised over $177 million for nonprofit organizations across the world. And they do that through small businesses, nonprofits, community organizations, all deciding to do one small thing on that Tuesday. Do one small thing, one nice thing for a neighbor, one nice thing for another organization. Give to the charity that means the most to you. Give to your church. Give to the arts organizations. Give to the, the organizations that help the children. Take that day and kick off the giving season, giving to the organization that means the most to you. So thank you for your time, thank you for the proclamation, and have a wonderful giving season.
Thanks, ma'am. Thanks for what y'all do for our community. Okay, next, we're going to move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is CU 1717, Nikki Parish.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman.
Good evening.
CU 1717, Nikki Parish. The property is located on the west side of North Berkeley Boulevard between Mortal Avenue and US 70 East. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor. The site is indicated with the red boundary line on the map shown. The site is located within an existing commercial strip mall known as Berkeley Junction Shopping Center. The property is owned general business, and a tattoo parlor is a permitted use within this district only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by city council. The submitted site plan indicates one existing 3,280 square foot commercial tenant space proposed for use as a tattoo parlor, consisting of a reception area, two tattoo stations, a body piercing station, and a restroom. The hours of operation are 12 noon to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, with two employees. The shopping center can be accessed by two existing 35-foot wide curb cuts along North Berkeley Boulevard, and there is significant or sufficient parking spaces that exist for customers of the proposed use and the shopping center. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council meeting on December the 4th. Here are pictures of the site and the tenant space. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing requesting conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor. You have to be sworn in. If anybody wants to speak, you have to be sworn in. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? You got about one more second. All right, we're going to close this public hearing, and we're going to move to CU 1817, Jose Morocco, I hope.
CU 1817, Jose Morketo is how I'm pronouncing it.
Got you.
It may be wrong, however.
I always learn.
The property is located on the east side of South Berkeley Boulevard between Ash Street and Elm Street. An applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor. The site is located within a strip commercial center which contains eight individual units, and the unit that will be occupied by the applicant contains 1,750 square feet of space. There are a total of 50 parking spaces on the site. Based on the existing uses within the building, approximately 50 spaces will be required to serve the entire commercial structure. The hours of operation are noon to 7:00 PM, and number of employees, three to four. The applicant indicates that he provides tattoo services by appointment only and caters to professionals, including servicemen of the base. The site is accessed by one two-way curb cut from Berkeley Boulevard. Since the building on the lot is existing and only one unit is to be leased for the proposed tattoo parlor, the applicant will not be required to retrofit the site to meet current requirements as they relate to landscaping. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council on December the 4th. And here is an elevation or a shot of the, the tenant space. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. All right, this is also a public hearing, CU 1817, Jose.
Morketo.
Morketo, I hope. It requests a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? See, and then we're going to close this public hearing and move to the next. What, did anybody want to speak? Jose, you going to have to perk up now. Come up to the clerk right here, and she will swear you in, okay?
Do you swear or fund, and how can you adapt your background and culture in terms of your zip code? Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, guys. My name's Jose Morketo. I'm currently here to talk to you guys about the business I'm hoping to open. I've been a tattoo artist for about five years now. I'm currently an artist here in Goldsboro, and I've been established here most of my career. The business I'm looking to open, we're looking to do tattoos and professional microblading. That's permanent makeup, also known as micropigmentation. I hope my idea for a business has interested everyone, and I hope everyone has a good night.
Okay.
I just wanted to introduce myself to you.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close that public hearing and move to Z1017, J. Isaac Gurley Farms.
Item G is Z1017, J. Isaac Gurley Farms Incorporated. The property is located on the northeast corner of US Highway 13 North and Hood Swamp Road. The applicant's requesting a zoning change from R-20A residential to general business conditional district with the site plan approved required, approval required separately. The property has a frontage of 760 feet on US 13 North and 1,060 feet on Hood Swamp Road. Is approximately 8.84 acres. Surrounding zoning, as you can see on the map, to the north, you have R-20A residential and RM9. To the south, you have R-20A residential. To the east, ONI1 and R-20A residential, and to the west, you have R-20A residential. The property is indicated with the red line boundary on the map. The property is currently vacant. Site and landscape plans have been submitted for a convenience store on a portion of the property at the corner of US 13 and Hood Swamp Road. If the property is rezoned, any future development proposed would require complete plan approval. Surrounding properties are primarily vacant farmland, along with a number of seen as well as all of the other additional nonprofit service organizations in the city of Goldsboro. Therefore, I check out on the mayor of the city of Goldsboro, I do hereby proclaim November 28, 2017, as Giving Tuesday in the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and call upon all our citizens to join together to give back to the community any way that is personally meaningful. So I think this goes without saying, this is a really good deal. And a lot of really good people are doing a lot of really good things in our city, but there's a lot of need in our city, and I think we've got to keep working on it. And you can comment in a minute.
I will.
All right, I'll just plug you in too.
All right. First of all, thank you for the proclamation. This means a lot. I love starting these meetings with good news. This is always wonderful. I like coming to the meetings and seeing people who have done good things in the community to be recognized. And as you know, there are a lot of nonprofit organizations in this county, in the city, that do a lot of good for a lot of people. And we're not the only city that experiences that. All across the world, it's people like us, on the ground, boots on the ground, working hard every day to make a difference in their communities. So, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving has officially been named Giving Tuesday worldwide. It is a worldwide movement that so far has raised over $177 million for nonprofit organizations across the world. And they do that through small businesses, nonprofits, community organizations, all deciding to do one small thing on that Tuesday. Do one small thing, one nice thing for a neighbor, one nice thing for another organization. Give to the charity that means the most to you. Give to your church. Give to the arts organizations. Give to the organizations that help the children. Take that day and kick off the giving season, giving to the organization that means the most to you. So, thank you for your time, thank you for the proclamation, and have a wonderful giving season.
Thanks, ma'am. Thanks for what y'all do. Okay, next we're going to move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is CU 1717, Nikki Parish.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman.
Good evening.
CU 1717, Nikki Parish. The property is located on the west side of North Berkeley Boulevard between Mortal Avenue and US 70 East. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor. The site is indicated with the red boundary line on the map shown. The site is located within an existing commercial strip mall known as Berkeley Junction Shopping Center. The property is on general business, and a tattoo parlor is a permitted use within this district only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by city council. The submitted site plan indicates one existing 3,280-square-foot commercial tenant space proposed for use as a tattoo parlor, consisting of a reception area, two tattoo stations, a body piercing station, and a restroom. The hours of operation are 12 noon to 8 p.m., Monday through Saturday, with two employees. The shopping center can be accessed by two existing 35-foot-wide curb cuts along North Berkeley Boulevard, and there is significant or sufficient parking spaces that exist for customers of the proposed use and the shopping center. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council meeting on December the 4th. Here are pictures of the site and the tenant space. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor. You have to be sworn in. If anybody wants to speak, you have to be sworn in. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? You've got about one more second. All right, we're going to close this public hearing, and we're going to move to CU 1817, Jose Marqucho, I hope.
CU 1817, Jose Marquacho is how I'm pronouncing it. It may be wrong, however...
I always learn.
The property is located on the east side of South Berkeley Boulevard between Ash Street and Elm Street. An applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor. The site is located within a strip commercial center which contains eight individual units, and the unit that will be occupied by the applicant contains 1,750 square feet of space. There are a total of 50 parking spaces on the site. Based on the existing uses within the building, approximately 50 spaces will be required to serve the entire commercial structure. The hours of operation are noon to 7 p.m., and number of employees, three to four. The applicant indicates that he provides tattoo services by appointment only and caters to professionals, including servicemen of the base. The site is accessed by one two-way curb cut from Berkeley Boulevard. Since the building on the lot is existing and only one unit is to be leased for the proposed tattoo parlor, the applicant will not be required to retrofit the site to meet current requirements as they relate to landscaping. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council on December the 4th. And here is an elevation or a shot of the tenant space. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. All right, this is also a public hearing. CU 1817, Jose...
Marquacho.
Marquacho, I hope. Requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? See, and then we're going to close this public hearing and move to the next. What, did anybody want to speak? Jose, you go ahead and perk up now. Come up to the clerk right here, and she will swear you in, okay? Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, guys. My name's Jose Marquacho. I'm currently here to talk to you guys about the business I'm hoping to open. I've been a tattoo artist for about five years now. I'm currently an artist here in Goldsboro, and I've been established here most of my career. The business I'm looking to open, we're looking to do tattoos and professional microblading. That's permanent makeup, also known as micropigmentation. I hope my idea for a business has interested everyone, and I hope everyone has a good night.
Okay.
I just wanted to introduce myself to you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close that public hearing and move to Z 1017, J. Isaac Gurley Farms.
Item G is Z 1017, J. Isaac Gurley Farms Incorporated. The property is located on the northeast corner of US Highways 13 North and Hood Swamp Road. The applicant's requesting a zoning change from R 20A Residential to General Business Conditional District with the site plan approval required separately. The property has a frontage of 760 feet on US 13 North and 1,060 feet on Hood Swamp Road. It is approximately 8.84 acres. Surrounding zoning, as you can see on the map, to the north you have R 20A Residential and RM 9. To the south you have R 20A Residential. To the east, O and I 1, and R 20A Residential. And to the west you have R 20A Residential. The property is indicated with the red line boundary on the map. The property is currently vacant. Site and landscape plans have been submitted for a convenience store on a portion of the property at the corner of US 13 and Hood Swamp Road. If the property is rezoned, any future development proposed would require complete plan approval. Surrounding properties are primarily vacant farmland along with a number of single-family and non-conforming mobile homes across both US 13 and Hood Swamp Road. Two other lots near the intersection of US 13 and Hood Swamp Road were zoned general business at the time the city's ETJ was extended in this area. An existing convenience store and gas station on the west side of US 13 North was satellite-annexed to the city on June 30, 1999. The proposed land use plan shows that the city adopted the land use plan, designates this property for a combination of mixed-use to, mixed-use and low-density residential development. Mixed-use designation would include commercial-type uses that may impact lower-density residential uses. They are typically located at major intersections. City water and sewer are not available to serve this property, and the applicant has submitted a petition for non-contiguous annexation of the property. This is an aerial of the site showing that the property is vacant farmland. The submitted site plan indicates that the property will be divided into six lots with the dedication of New Street bisecting the property and running from US 13 North to Hood Swamp Road. The road would have a right-of-way width of 65 feet and a pave width of 45 feet. Of the six lots, Lot 1 is the proposed convenience store, as you see on the site plan on the map. Lot 2 is 1.74 acres, Lot 3, 0.98 acres, which is a septic repair area. Lot 4, 1.18 acres. Lot 5 is 1.56, and Lot 6 is .57 acres, which is a stormwater area. Developer will require to submit preliminary and final subdivision plans in order to allow for the division of the land. A 4,900-square-foot commercial building is proposed with a 30-foot by 135-fuel canopy. The building will be oriented facing US 13 North. With regards to access of the site or to the convenience store, the applicant is working with NC DOT regarding the future road improvements to US 13 and a potential realignment of Hood Swamp Road. The realignment of Hood Swamp Road would allow for direct driveway access to all lots. Vehicle or surface buffer is proposed adjacent to the paved area. A total of 26 street trees are proposed along the street frontages, and a refuse container is shown at the rear of the building, which will be properly screened in accordance with the city requirements. All HVAC units will be properly screened from the view, and the developer will pay a fee in lieu of sidewalk installation. Here are some photos of the site. And at this time, no action is necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for city council meeting on December the 4th. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. All right, this is a public hearing, Z 1017, requesting a zoning change from R 20A Residential to General Business Conditional District with site plan approval separately. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? All right, we're going to close this public hearing and move to the next item. Well, first, we've got to excuse our hard work and planning commission and thank y'all for what y'all do. And you know you're always welcome to stay for the continuing of the meeting if you would like. But if you would like to leave, we certainly would understand that as well. But do thank y'all for what y'all do. So our next thing is Item H, and it's Economic Development Historic Preservation Urban Development Project.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
I usually don't read these verbatim, but because of the details of this one, I'm going to. The subject is the Economic Development Historic Preservation and Urban Redevelopment Project Participation. Background: The company is interested in investing in downtown. The scope of the project consists of six historic buildings that are currently vacant and in need of significant rehabilitation to make them productive once again. The project will effectively utilize every floor of each of the buildings and develop multiple mixed-use properties that will result in at least 55 market-rate apartments, actually estimated at 57 units right now, with 68 bedrooms, with a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units with some extended-stay options ranging in rental rates of $695 to up to $1,700. The project will also reproduce over 12,000 square feet of commercial, ready-to-lease space and affect a total of over 68,000 square feet, actually estimated at 68,691 square feet. The total project investment will be nearly $11 million. The project's scope consists of the following properties: 200 East Walnut Street, 204 East Walnut Street, 206 East Walnut Street, 106 South John Street, 135 West Walnut Street, and 139 West Walnut Street. The company is highly reputable and qualified in the field of historic rehabilitations for reuse and has conducted similar projects in multiple states and in North Carolina cities. Currently, these six properties contribute $3,784 to the local tax revenues per year, including county, city, and the municipal service district. Due to the current state of these buildings, their historic value to our community, the economic impact a 100% utilization of their built space would create, and the projected increase in the town, city, and county property tax revenues, the city and county are considering a partnership with the company to secure the private investment. With this interest, the city and county have negotiated draft agreements that identify incentives to allow this project to move forward, and that are also specify certain expectations and assurances to protect the public's interest in the project. A copy of the draft agreements were provided, along with the agenda, as of Friday morning, and they stipulate that the incentives are as follows. The city will provide a $300,000 loan to the developer to apply toward the building's historic exterior facade improvements in return for the total $10.7 million project investment and the expected $7.9 million direct building improvement investments. This loan will be a performance-based loan and only provided after certain benchmarks of the company are achieved, such as the approved building plans and permitting will issue the first $100,000. After there's a 50% substantial completion of the rehabilitations and issuance of a certificate of occupancy, we'll follow the remaining $200,000. So, three benchmarks, $100,000. After the permits and the plans have been approved by the city, 50% substantial completion will instigate the issuance of the other $100,000, and then, once all the buildings have received a certificate of occupancy, we will receive the other $100,000 loan. This will be a forgivable loan. After a 10-year period, once the required performance specified in the grant agreements are met, it will be considered a grant. The city and county will provide an ad valorem property tax-based performance grant to the developer for a period of 10 years at varying levels over the period, beginning with the value equivalent to a 90% reduction for the first five years, and then it will go down in years, 75% for year six, 60% for year seven, 45% for year eight, 30% for year nine, 15% for year 10, and 0% valuation after 10 years. Even with the grant and throughout the grant period, the revenues to the local municipalities will be greater than what the properties currently generate. The anticipated total amount to be awarded to the developer over the 10-year period will not exceed $310,314. It is estimated that the city and county will receive $73,938 and $75,498 respectively over the period in tax revenues. The city municipal service district will not be subject to grant participation and will realize $8,225 annually after the investment is made. And over the 10-year period, that will equate to $82,250. After the 10-year grant period has expired, the return to the local municipalities is expected to be no less than $54,200 annually in property tax revenues. In summary, the city and county will receive an estimated $200,000 over what the properties currently pay in property tax over the 10-year period. And the agreements also make certain expectations and assurances, and the highlights for these in the agreements will assure the following. Company shall spend no less than $7 million on real property improvement subject to ad valorem property tax of the six buildings. Company must repair, rehabilitate, open, and operate the project as a mixed-use project, including at least 55 market-rate apartment units and the creation of at least 12,000 square feet of commercial space, affecting at least 68,000 square feet of historic built space. The improved building shall be completed in accordance with the Department of Interior Standards for Historic Rehabilitation. Company shall comply with local land use planning and development regulations. In return for the public investment, the city will have a lien on the properties in the form of a promissory note and a deed of trust. Re-lease and termination from the promissory note and deed of trust will occur 10 years after the final loan grant payment is made and the assurances and expectations have been met as stipulated in the agreements. Company will provide historic property easements to the city to assure the investment in the company's historic treatment to the properties. In addition, the city is negotiating rights to a portion of the roof at 139 West Walnut Street to allow a wireless antenna access in return for the public's involvement. Recapture, if company is at any time not current on taxes, fees, assessments, or other amounts owed to city or county, the city and county will not be required to continue grant payments. The timeline for which will require the rehabilitation work to be completed is subject to the execution of the agreement, but will be limited to a 24-month period anticipated to be completed by April 2020. If company ceases to operate facilities at any time within the 10-year period, a recapture of the grants is owed back to the city and county based on the time this occurs within the 10-year period. It should also be noted that the city accepted the donation of four of these properties to save them and understood at the time, one and a half years ago, that two of the buildings needed roof replacement valued then at approximately $130,000. The county provided the city $60,000 for their share of that expense. Therefore, if we do not sell these properties now, we will be required to incur that expense and may not recapture that in a resale. And based on demolition expenses that we received in 2015 for these two buildings alone, it was expected $145,000 for a base price due to potential asbestos. The economic impacts of historic preservation and reinvestment of these buildings will be broad, significant, and in accordance with the adopted vision of the 2007 Downtown Master Plan. Beyond the tax revenues, it is expected that the creation of 55-plus market-rate apartments will contribute approximately $612,000 annually to downtown businesses through sales revenues based on North Carolina economic indicators. The creation of over 12,000 square feet of available rehabilitated commercial space will attract additional small businesses and create or retain jobs. The complete rehabilitation of six historic properties that have lacked reinvestment for decades and require significant construction to secure their future as part of our historic built stock is unquantifiable. Outstanding items such as the continuation of the federal Historic Preservation Tax Credit Program, the ability of the company to secure a financial lender, and other outstanding steps may impact the ability to move this project forward, notwithstanding the subject agreements and local incentives. But this was the first step that was necessary to move forward with the next steps. I think I covered most of the highlights, but if there are any questions that you may have of me or you would like me to reiterate or expand upon one of the highlights that I've mentioned, I'd be happy to do so before I turn it over to public comments through my recommendation.
Any questions with Julie from the council?
Sure. Hi, Julie, how are you?
Good, thanks.
I just, I need a little bit more information. I'm sure you can give it to me, because we don't have to make a decision on this today. Am I right?
No, you're wrong.
We gotta make a decision today. One of my concerns is are we going to be making... Is this developer, is he going to be using our contractors in this area? Because I mean, I would like to make sure that the contractors here get opportunity to, you know, make some revenue as well in the community.
That is also my concern as well. The employment opportunities for constituents here in San of Goldsboro and San of Wayne County, that is my major concern. Other than that, the only other concern I was worried about, because I really have already had where I want to vote, was in regards to the tax of the MSD. Because it seemed like when you were explaining it, it's like the MSD tax for merchants, they're going to go, do like that. So, can you explain that?
All right, let's do this, because Councilmember Williams had the question. So let's let him finish his question, and then we'll come right back.
Okay.
All right, so go ahead, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. Yeah, so those are my biggest concerns. I think, you know, that's in our district and District 1. And I want to just make sure that, you know, contractors here get the opportunity to bid on that project and also local citizens here that may need a job, you know. I mean, I talk about it quite often. You know, a construction job is probably the best thing that, you know, that we can do for our unskilled laborers, you know. So, that's something that I would like to see, some job creation.
Well, right now, we don't have anything specified in the contract, but I can tell you, based on North Carolina Historic Preservation Economic Indicators, for every $1 million invested in a historic building, you get 41.1 jobs either created or retained in the local area. Because they are more labor-intensive, the money sticks around in the local economy longer than new construction. They tend to utilize the local skilled workforce and local tradesmen as well as building supplies. And so, the funds generally stay in the local community longer than, like I said, for new construction. There's nothing specified in the agreement now. I suspect the developer has some of his project supervisors that he leans on for these kinds of projects that he's done quite often. But the labor force that they would employ, I would suspect that they would be employing a lot of them locally because it's cost prohibitive for them to move from city to city across the state.
And Councilmember Williams?
Let me jump in and answer this question, I'm sorry.
No, no, we hadn't opened the public comment. You can sit back now, and we'll get ready for you, we'll call you.
We're gonna, I'll put it out for bid.
Well, you can come in a minute, Patrick, until, okay? Just calm down.
So, I was gonna share the developers in the audience, and he can answer that question if you'd like once it goes up to public hearing. But he will put the project out for bid, as you just heard. And everybody will have the opportunity to...
Is that all your questions?
I mean, I would like to see this project go forward. I just want to make sure that, you know, our citizens here get opportunity to, you know, work hard and, you know, and also, you know...
I mean, I just say that putting it out for bid doesn't guarantee a local contractor. I mean, you can put it out for bid, and somebody from Raleigh can come in with better numbers and still do it. So, it doesn't guarantee any jobs for anybody local or any revenue for anybody local, technically. So, I mean...
All right, you're skipping on me too.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, Mark. Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, Mark, you go next. You got any more questions?
We're skipping around, I'm sorry. My apologies. My, like I said, I can echo Councilman Williams' thoughts. I will say, before we get into a situation and a major discussion about bidding, because I mean, bids can be directly outsourced and really set out for just Wayne County, because I've seen that done before. Now, you can see throughout the whole state, but I've been in, like, business and worked in the state of North Carolina and worked in California. If you want to specifically set a bid for just one city and one particular county, you can do that. So, that forebodes that particular situation. But my only real concern, like I said, concern was what Councilman Williams was echoing, and then also the tax hike in the MSD. Now, that's my only concern, and I know where I'm going to vote. So, if you can explain that tax hike, then we can go from there.
Well, the tax hike is not going to be an increase in taxes. It's going to be an increase in the value through the municipal service district. The property owners of municipal service district currently pay 23, yeah, 23 and a half cents per $100 valuation. That is not going to go up because of this project. We're just not asking that the MSD district contribute to this project. So, they're not going to have a... The revenues that are generated are going to stay within the municipal service district, and we'll have those funds 100% throughout the 10-year period. So, basically, the MSD district is not going to be affected other than positively because we'll return 100% the increase in the value on the project.
And that will be in 10 years, correct?
That'll be starting from the time the project starts.
All right. The MSD, we're collecting that money at the completion of the project, and it doesn't get affected. So, it's positive revenue to the MSD.
Sounds good.
Are you good?
I'm good. Go ahead. Ms. Foster?
Oh, yes. I was just saying, I mean, if, once you put it out for contract, anybody that bids on it, the lowest person's going to win. So, wherever that person's from, whether it's Fayetteville, Raleigh, Durham, West Virginia, I mean, doesn't matter. So, it's not going to, doesn't mean it's going to create any jobs here for anybody local.
So, and I'm sure, Patrick, when we open the public hearing, it's dying to answer your questions. So, does any other council members have any questions for Julie? Missam?
Well, not so much a question, but I'd like to comment on the proposed. As everyone knows, I'm an advocate of downtown rehabilitation, trying to go forward with the progress that has been made up to this time. And this is a project that would continue that effort. But I do have some concerns. My concern primarily revolves around the fact that we're using taxpayer money to give to a private investor. to a private investor. And that does concern me because we have, we're talking about $300,000. It's, it's spoken of as a loan, but it's an unforgivable, I'd say forgivable loan, assuming that he meets the requirements of the contract. We have had probably approximately $13 million worth of private investment downtown here since 2014. And very few dollars have flowed from the city coffers to those investors who have put their money into these projects in the form primarily of facade grants. Those facade grants generally equal 2% of their total investment. This is a big project. It's a, depending on how you look at the numbers, it's a 2,000, I mean, excuse me, 7,900,000 direct building improvement investment. The overall investment project is projected to be upwards to $11 million. I believe that we need to continue to save our buildings downtown, our historic buildings. We need to put forth the effort that a number of people have done in the past and are continuing to do as we speak, to bring businesses downtown, save our buildings, enhance our city, be something that we can be proud to call Goldsboro. But I cannot support giving $300,000 of taxpayer money, plus the buildings that we're speaking of as well, plus the tax incentives. They, those numbers mount up to quite a bit of, of contribution on the part of the city. Tax incentives are not unusual, but cash outlays are. So, I have toiled with this decision, I've lost a lot of sleep thinking about it, but in the final analysis, this is my position.
Thank you, Ms. Ham. Mr. Taylor, did you want to say anything before I open up the public?
Yeah.
Okay, did you, Mr. Broadway, before? All right, so with that, we're going to open the public comment period. Patrick, we're going to start on you first. We don't normally do that, but since you're dying to get up here, and certainly you need to address, local employment is obviously very important, so I would certainly hope you would hit on that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I apologize, Mr. Stevens, I apologize for jumping the gun earlier, I'm not familiar with the protocols that you, that your meeting has up for that, I apologize. This is the second time I've been in this room, because I was lucky enough to be a presenter here when you guys had the wonderful Main Street Conference here in 2016 in this very room. To, to address the question, because obviously it is an important one about the job creation first and foremost, when I hire the general contractor, which is going to be a company called Rehab Builders, which is in, oh, there's a lot of cross-ownership amongst our entities, they're going to definitely be looking for qualified local subcontractors that can perform this work. It's not going to be necessarily just based on the lowest bid that you get, because you might get the, you might not get the best product for, for, for that low bid. However, I, I can't restrict them from saying you need to hire a contractor from this particular territorial area, because they have a lot of relationships with guys that may be interested in working here, that can come out of area, that might be able to do it for cheaper than somebody that's in the area. We don't know that. It's going to be based off the workload and who responds to that bid package when they put it out. It is going to be definitely put out for public bid, obviously, and our preference will be to hire local wherever we can, or they're, or the, as a developer, we want to do that. I can say that Rehab Builders has consistently been known to hire and permanently take on salaried employees that started as temporary labor on jobs in different communities that, that they worked in. So, I wish I could answer that question more definitively and make promises that we're going to be able to hire all local subcontractors, but we just can't guarantee that because the numbers that we've based this pro forma on are sensitive to the numbers that the construction company can feel good that they can bring in and guarantee. Because when we sign the contract and we go to the bank, they're going to expect the, the performance of that contract for a guaranteed maximum price. With regard to the gentleman's concern, I, I understand that, a lot of Mr. Ham's concern, I understand that there's a lot of unpopularity with, with what we're asking for. I can tell you this, if we, if we don't have that type of financial support, the numbers for this project won't work for us, we won't be able to do it. I think all the, there's been a ton of great things going on in Goldsboro, and I think everybody in this room should be proud of it. There's been a lot of hard work, but there's a little bit more work to go. And when I was out here with some lenders that were responding very positively to the, the project concept that was proposed to them, the senior, which is very unusual that you get the attention of senior people at a bank to come out and look at a project, the, the senior individual pointed out, he said, "This downtown looks great, but if you don't do that building, it's never going, it's never going to look done." So, if there's any other further questions that anybody thought of while I made that address, I'd be happy to answer them while I'm standing up here. Again, we feel strongly that this is a good project, we think the demand is here, we're anxious to be a part of this community. My, my parents actually lived here in the early 70s, and my dad was stationed at Seymour-Johnson Air Force Base, and my mother was a teacher at Brogdon Elementary School, made some lifelong friends when they were down here. And I grew up in Michigan, but we kept coming down to North Carolina pretty much once a year. So, Goldsboro doesn't feel that much different from, from kind of an extended or a second home. And really, that's, that's all I have, so if there's any more questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question. What about in building, in developing these buildings into potential rental apartment bids and rooms and things of that nature, studios? What amenities are you willing to offer potential patrons to these development? What, what, I mean, like saying, like water or trash and sewage? Well, I mean, we, we offer trash and sewage, but I mean, what amenities would be paid per your development company? Because I know there's different housing apartments that do that within the city, so what are you offering?
Well, include it in the, in the pro forma, because in order to keep this as an apples-to-apples comparison, because the other, I had to use the rent rates that were already being realized in this market. What we underwrote in the numbers that I shared with Julie's office and some of, and members of city staff is, would be all water and sewer, and then whatever parking was required, because there is a parking component to this. What we will more than likely do though is work out a bulk services cable and internet agreement with time, with a, with a cable provider like we have on several of our other projects, and wrap that in with the rent at a rate that's both beneficial to the prospective tenant and also to ourselves, you know, it's, it's a win-win financially for everybody. As far as amenities, we'll have, we include having a gym facility, like I said, and some nice community space. The apartments will be finished to a first-class level, I'm, I'm confident in saying they'll be as nice or nicer than, than what is currently around here, although I've toured some that have been done very, very well. We're, we're definitely going to try to shoot for the feeling of, particularly at the 1, 139 building, that this is where everybody wants to live, this is the place to be. And, and we've been successfully doing that in other different communities for a long time, and we think that's another, that'll just be another great building to do.
Anything else?
One question. You said Rehab Builders?
Yeah.
Builders, they're out of Winston-Salem?
Yeah.
Okay. On any of your other projects, do they often bring guys with them to work?
So, what, what happens is with Rehab Builders, we'll have management, site management down here, which will involve probably three guys full-time, and then the rest of the work is going to be subcontracted out to the major subs. So, the only rehab employees that'll be here on a daily basis will probably be a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, and a foreman. The daily labor will more than likely all be sourced locally and then, you know, subcontractors as, as possible. If you can find a qualified subcontractor that's motivated and, and understands the rehab process and wants to work, it makes a lot of sense for the construction company to hire them, because then you're not having to pay travel. If you gotta bring somebody in from a long ways out of town, or even somebody that's got to commute daily and charge mileage, it's just, it's not cost-effective to do it.
Yeah, I was just asking, on any of your other projects that you've done, what has been the, what has been, what has, what has your general contractor done on any other projects? Was it mostly he got contractors from out of that city or in that city?
There's usually a mix of both.
Okay.
It's, it's typically a mix of both. It'll typically be driven, you know, by the, whatever availability of the major subs that they're working with right now, as well as the type of response that is garnered from when that is put out for bid.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if you can hire local, then there'd be no reason not to.
I just know a lot of general contractors who like to go with the same people that you've been going with, because you know their quality of work.
Sure.
So, if you've been in all these other places, he might have a crew that he takes with them, take with him regardless of whether still that contractor, to do the work because you can rely on their work, you know where to come, you know how professional it's going to be and everything, so that's why I ask, because I feel like if he's coming out of Winston, more than likely, he might have guys, contractors in Winston that he knows that can do the rehab work or somewhere else that he brings with him, so coming to Goldsboro.
Rehab, Rehab Builders operates from Maryland down to Florida.
Yes, I saw that, yes, I saw that, yes.
So, they're just finishing a pretty large project in Rocky Mount. I would assume that there are subcontractors that were sourced from Rocky Mount that would be definitely contacted for a prospective project effort in Goldsboro. Done very good, a few projects in the recent years in Greenville, North Carolina, there was a lot of subcontractors sourced for those projects in eastern North Carolina. Again, there, there's a willingness to source locally, it's just, I can't really hold, I can't force them to do that.
Thank you.
All right. I have one, one more question. This project requires approximately 44 parking spaces, is that correct for your residents?
Um, yeah, well, yes, somewhere around 44 parking spaces.
Have you discussed with the city as to where those parking spaces might be? Let me, before you answer that question, I would assume that a majority of those parking spaces would be dedicated to the 139 West Walnut Street property, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, have you discussed with the city where those spaces might be found, or are they off-street or on-street?
No, they would be off-street. There's, I believe the lot that I spoke with about the city was kind of like away from Walnut Street and to the left, but there's also some property that's in between the two projects that we would be open to trying to acquire if we could get the number right with a potential seller.
So, would you purchase those parking spaces yourself, or would you expect the city to provide them for you?
No, we would purchase them. We have that included in our financial model.
Okay.
The, the, well, we'd purchase whatever we could purchase from a private seller. If whatever we couldn't purchase, we would, we would need to work out a licensing arrangement with the city. I've done that multiple occasions in other municipalities, it's not, it's too, not too difficult, as long as there's not a, you know, as long as we're not taking over a space that's demanded constantly, and the space that I was referred to look at does not look like it's being overused.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? I got Allison first, and Mr. Gaylor, you can come after Allison.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm Allison Platt from 203 North Slocum Street, and I'd like to present a slightly different perspective for you. My work, as you probably know, is in master planning for mostly small to medium-sized cities. And I, I do have a couple of personal experiences with the work of Rehab Builders, most particularly in Danville, Virginia. There, when I started doing the master plan there in 2012, there was a building called the Farrell Building, which was, I think, four stories tall, and the facade was falling off of it. It had been vacant for about 20 years, and it was, they were considering taking it down because pieces of the facade were falling on the sidewalk. Rehab Builders reached an agreement with the city, and during the time I finished the master plan, which was about seven or eight months, the building was completely rehabilitated, and they put in 13 apartments plus, I think it was three ground-level retail building spaces. And the, the property has been very successful and it's fully rented, and since that time, the city has contracted with Rehab Builders to do four additional buildings. And you don't, that doesn't happen unless there's a real benefit for the city. So, clearly, in their minds, there was, and some of the projects that they've done since then in Danville have been bigger. I also have seen the projects in Wilson, there are two projects that they did there, somewhat smaller buildings, but these were buildings that were not going to get rehabilitated, and that's an important thing to understand. These buildings that we're thinking about here are not being rehabilitated by anybody. So, if we don't strike a deal, it's likely that they're going to remain empty. And so, you know, these buildings can become financially productive for the city and for the people who live there, and for our retailers who really need more people living downtown if we do that. And just a note, the facade grant amount, or, or the, the amount of $300,000, that's a forgivable loan, as a percentage of the total, is not really any more than is given to a lot of people for a facade grant. So, in a way, they're equivalent, you're just helping them with that part of the equation. And so, I don't see how that should be a problem. I'd just like to read to you, I mean, they, as, as Patrick said, they work in many states, but I'd like to read to you the list of, probably not all, but most of the cities in North Carolina, which have used the services sometimes multiple times in North Carolina. They include Meben, Concord, Greenville, Wilson, Gastonia, Henderson, Kinston, Weldon, Henderson, oh, I said that, Ashboro, Winston-Salem, Greensboro, Randallman, Windsor, Statesville, and Graham. These are small cities and large cities, and in many cases, multiple projects, sometimes very large projects. So, clearly, there is a formula that, that they provide that, first of all, not many other people do provide, and second of all, it's one that obviously works for these communities or they wouldn't be reaching these agreements. I urge you to take, take them up on this offer, because in the end, it's going to help our downtown retailers, it's going to help the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Judge Gaylor?
Sir?
I apologize for referring to you as Mr. Gaylor, that didn't, that didn't sound right, does it?
As long as it's nothing worse than that, I don't worry too much about it.
I'm with you, sir. How are you?
Good afternoon or good, good evening, gentlemen, it's a pleasure to see you again. I live, I'm Charlie Gaylor, I live at 310 West Walnut Street with Rhonda, and I come before you tonight just to speak a few words about this project. I think it's a very exciting possibility, I think it's a very opportune project for us to be taking a very close and careful look and see how we can best utilize this project. You know, I come from working on committees, as Chuck knows, Mayor knows, with economic development. And what we're looking at here, gentlemen, is more than just an historic preservation project, which by itself is worthwhile, but you're looking at a major economic development project here. I mean, this is something where you're talking about $11 million plus that's coming into downtown Goldsboro to do this project. And you know, whenever you put together something like this, if you go out to the industrial park and look around, what you'll find is a situation out there where many of those projects were done because you had to make the numbers work. I mean, you bring in AAR, bring in some of these other companies, I'm just using that as an example, not necessarily because they received incentives or anything, I'm just using that as an example. But to bring in that type of industry to Wayne County and Goldsboro, you, you're competing against some pretty serious folks out there, and I think the same thing happens here. And in order to make it work, in order to get them here, sometimes you do have to make some concessions and make some things together and make it work. Because after all, the project being built is going to provide a considerable amount of return in the people that are working on the project. And I'm like you, I hope that they're local people, and I think a lot of them will be local people. And once those buildings are done, there's constant makeup, a constant upkeep that has to be done. So, local people are certainly going to be involved in that, there's no question about that. And down the road, as these buildings are developed, think about what we're talking about here, folks, the number of businesses, the number of apartments, the people that are going to share and decorating those apartments, the furniture that's going to be bought, the economic impact is significant, just like it is with any type of industry that you bring in to Goldsboro, Wayne County. I would also mention to you that going back and thinking about this a little bit, I'm reminded of the fact that years ago, when we were doing the master plan for downtown Goldsboro, one of the things that we talked about at that time was which buildings are actually pivotal to what we're trying to achieve. achieve here? And we put together several buildings at that time. I think if you go back and look, you'll see those, those names on that list, and we were talking about all this. One of those is 139 West Walnut Street, a pivotal building, the Wayne National Bank Building. And I think that's one of the buildings that we, we definitely want to see done. And it's going to have to be done probably as a package. We're not Raleigh. In some ways, I'm glad we're not, but in other ways, I wish we were, because we probably wouldn't be in the position of having to compete. But I do also know a little bit about this developer. After the situation got underway, I had a chance to talk to some folks. I've had the privilege of serving on several boards across the state of North Carolina, and this company does have a good reputation, and I think they do want to come in here and do the right thing. And I just ask you to please consider this carefully, look at it as an economic development project if you want to, but this is something that we need to do. This also moves us a little bit off of Center Street, a little bit closer to James Street. It gets us off into off-center and onto other sections of Walnut Street. It moves this whole thing around. We've seen some great things happen, let's don't stop now. This is no time to stop. We need to go forward, we need to think seriously about this. Don't miss this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Kathy Cornelissen, Carolina Pine. Doesn't take a lot to make me nervous, but I'm a little nervous. Mr. Hamm, this is a conversation between you and me at the moment. I guess I'm nervous because I have a lot of respect for you, and don't know really where to start, but I know that you outfitted the building where Well-Traveled Beer sits, and as your fellow board member, you and I have had many conversations together, and I know that when you think long and hard about something like myself, you've pretty much made up your mind. And I hope that you'll probably take another moment and think long and hard about this at least one more time. I know that with the building and that you've got Well-Traveled Beer in, you received some assistance with that building, and I know it made that project for you a whole lot easier, and some of that assistance, you know, came from the MSD Fund. And without that, I'm sure it might have made that project a little more difficult for you. And if I've got my numbers right, the percentages, and compared to the ratio of what we might be assisting with this project, it comes out about the same. And when you look at all of the jobs that Well-Traveled Beer has created, and all of the people it has brought downtown, and all of the money it has generated, and all of the customers it has brought to my store, I just think it's absolutely fantastic what you have done for that building, and what that business has done for our downtown. And I think that the opportunity, that the incentive that downtown provided you in that project, allowing you and helping you to, to do that project, I'm sure truly benefited you in that building. And I think allowing that same opportunity for that project, to do the same thing for the rest of downtown, to create these other jobs, and to bring these other people down here, would be truly magnificent. And when you look at the ratios of benefit, it pretty much comes out to about the same. So I think that if you look at how it benefit, benefited you, I think you can look at how it's going to benefit these people, and how it'll benefit the rest of downtown, so.
I'd like to respond with just one answer. The percentage of money that I receive from the city for a facade grant, which was offered to a lot of people, that I applied for, was approved for, is zero-two percent of the total investment in that building.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, would anybody else like to speak? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here because I want to ask, why is it such a necessity that we, that you all take a vote on this? I'm excited about it, some of this, I'm just hearing about it, but when I listen at everything that has been said, I'm confused.
Well, let me help you with the necessity, okay? The county is partnering us, with us on this, and they have scheduled their public hearing and their vote for tomorrow, and they're basing their vote on what we do tonight, so they need to know what we do. Other than that, there is no necessity to do that, but we had committed to the county, we're trying to get a national for them tonight for their meeting tomorrow. So that, that's the hurry of it. And I want to, since you're bringing this up, I want to, the county does it generally, partner with the city a lot on things in the city, in the downtown, and I want to thank the county for doing that, because they're giving up taxes just like we are to make this project work. So it's a very, very good partnership between the city and the county. As I say, they scheduled their public hearing already, their public hearing is tomorrow, and they're going to vote on this tomorrow at their meeting. So that's why we need to vote tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
I'd say.
Anybody else want to speak? I think I'll send you tonight.
Good evening again, Aaron City Council. I'm Wendy Walker from the Arts Council.
Yes.
Our building is located on the corner of Walnut and James Street, and we greatly benefit from the improvements that have already been made on Center Street, and we are in full support of any other improvements that can be made in downtown Goldsboro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Reed. I live at 1203 Speed Street. I am in David Hamm's district, and I would love for you to use my tax money to support this project. I think it can only bring more money into the downtown area, which in turn will give us more money to spend in other areas of the city. And I don't see anybody else tearing down our doors trying to rehabilitate, rehabilitate six buildings that we have that really need it. And if you don't do this, you're still going to be putting more money in it, because you have to in order to keep them from going down any further.
Thank you.
She's one of my favorite constituents.
Anybody else? If not, we're going to close the public hearing. Anybody else?
Anybody else?
All right, we're going to close the public hearing, and you have a recommendation before you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
I, I'd just like to say one thing, in, in defense of Councilman Hamm, he and I have been, we've been at a conference since Wednesday, I think, and we've gone around this problem about fifty times, I think. And from a banker's standpoint, it scares you to death when, when you look at this, but you also have to look at past history. I think we have to look at the opportunity, the numbers work. And another thing that we really had talked a lot about, when I read the thing, we're going to do these to preservation North Carolina standards. We, we're going to build these buildings and rehab them correctly. So looking at it, looking at the partnership with the county, we've just got a terrific, terrific opportunity. And so I, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this agreement.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Is there any discussion?
I'd like to say so. You know, I've been sitting here quietly listening to everybody making.
And that's unusual, I just want to point out.
I know.
And I've been thinking, and, and somebody brought to my attention over the weekend, when I was discussing it, that the fountain in the center of Walnut and Center costs much more than what it's going to take to rehabilit, I mean, to, for our contribution to do the largest landmark we have in the city of Goldsboro. And while I hate the thoughts of the three hundred thousand dollars, I think in the future that we would regret it if we don't do it now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gaylor. Mr. Stevens?
I, I want to speak to Patrick. I don't know where you're at, because I can't see that far back, because it gets fuzzy as you get further back. But I spoke with your mother at, I'm, 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 like my mother does, because my mother will tell the truth. She would come to you right now. But I spoke with your mother during the retreat for the Downtown Development Corp., and her and I had a deep conversation in regards to your project, and then we also had a conversation about a dear friend and my family's, and as I grew up, as a teacher at Brogdon Primary Elementary, and Ms. Sandra McCullen. And we were just having a general conversation in regards to what the potentials you could bring here. So I looked at all of this, I went over, and David and I have, you know, we've, we've, we've gone and racked our brains, and I've racked my brain, and I, I, I just, to the point right now, I've, I thought I was going to vote one way, and then I'm voting another way, and then voting, and, and I've come up with three different directions. So I'm not going to make this long story short and not ramble, but I'm going to say, I think your project is a wonderful opportunity. I think we're just going to, I think you have to hold on and give us a minute, and I guess we got a motion on the table in a second, so Mayor, if you please.
Any more discussion?
Yes, one more.
Oh, my goodness. Go ahead, Anthony.
Yes, I want to add to him today. No, overall, I think it's a good thing for District One, because of the storm, we lost a lot of housing stock. So I think that, that's one of the reasons why I'm going in that direction. So thank you for, you know.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All of us in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries five to. So if you will start. And since Scott, Melissa, if y'all would let the county know tonight and morning, that'd be appreciated, okay? All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for the participation, and we appreciate everybody's efforts on either side of this, because it was a tough issue. With that, we have public comment time, and we got Mr. George Williams, who's been patiently waiting to speak to us. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Give him one minute. Let him clear out a minute, because they'll be noisy.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Maybe they're good, maybe it's good enough now. How are you, sir?
I'm doing great, Mayor. First of all, I want to apologize to you and all the council members. I wasn't here two, uh, two weeks ago.
Hey, can y'all hold it down back there, please?
Two weeks ago tonight, and I apologize for that. I just came the wrong night. I came on Tuesday night, Monday night, so that tells you one thing, I don't come very often to the council meetings, but I apologize for it.
That's perfectly fine.
Next, good news. I had an interview with my doctor today, and he tells me he's, I don't have the cancer, it's not gone, but it hadn't grown up inside, so he's going to put it off, and I go back in January for another CT scan, and then we'll go from that the first of the year.
Well, I know that's relieving.
I got a good Thanksgiving, and a Christmas present already here on the twentieth of November. Next, I want to tell you thank you. And I got a list of people I want to thank. First of all, law enforcement, I count. We fed approximately a hundred and fifty people at the dinner. And Manager Stevens, it could not have been nobody any better to take care of the facilities, Ben told me his crowd was. Did a fantastic job.
That's great.
Thank you, city. Thank the county of Wayne. Wayne Alley and his channel TNT did an outstanding job. And I want to skip down to the news artists. This young lady here, Steve Haren and Casey Mazingo, all were there. I don't know whether they ate or not, but they were invited to eat, and they did a fantastic job, news artists did. Radio did a good job, they have a GDR. Anonymous donor that took care of all the bills, paid all the expenses. We got the same amount of money in the bank today we had on November the eighth. So we got another year to go next year, and we were planning for another one October and November. I may not be back until next October and November, but when I come back, I'm not going to ask for any money, I can tell you that, because I've already got it.
You can come back anytime you want.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you for what y'all did.
Mickey's Pasta Shop, all of the donators that donated, we gave away seventy door prizes. About one for every other officer that showed up. Tickle to death, they were. I mean, they were great. I want to thank Legislative John Bell that came. I want to thank my granddaughter, the ones that was there eating. She did the National Anthem for them, and she did an outstanding job, just like she has at high schools and at Mudcats ball games. Thank her. All the door prizes and, and decorating of the building, pined floors, furnished all the materials. We didn't have nothing like as much cost as we did last year. We had an outstanding dinner, and the good Lord's willing, and I'm living next August or September, you're going to all be invited again. And I ain't going to need no money, and I ain't going to need no facility this year, because I've already been promised we could use the new Maxwell building next year. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Next, we had a request to speak on Neighborhood Computer Center, Mr. Sherman Johnson. Mr. Johnson, he sent us a message that he's sick and can't be here, so if you see that on your agenda, he's not going to be here to speak. So now we'll open it up to anybody in the public that wants to speak for up to three minutes. Does anybody want to speak? Yes, sir? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good day to you, sir.
I just want to take a few minutes of your time to give you an update, and also make a request on behalf of Fox and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Thank you, sir.
The first item that I have given to you is a copy of our meeting minutes and notes from our meeting in August, August eighth, a special meeting on August fourteenth, our monthly meeting on, in September, and also our monthly meeting in October. The reason there are four minutes, meetings, of meetings here is because we were unable to have a quorum in order to approve the minutes in September and October.
Okay.
Also, there is included a copy of the procedural rules and policies that were established for the Recreation Advisory Commission. And you'll note that in August, we approved a quorum rule, which calls for a quorum of fifty percent of the appointed members plus one. And we established duties and responsibilities for RAC officers, a length of term for RAC officers, and also an attendance policy for the RAC. In our meeting on, in November fourteenth, we passed a rule regarding alternate members, and then there is a description of what an alternate member's duties and what they're entitled to do. We have recently received a resignation from an appointed member, and that's the next item, is a copy of the resignation letter that we received from her. And also, I am going to request this evening the termination of the appointments of two RAC members, whose names are in the final item down there, based on the attendance policy of the Recreation Advisory Commission. The letters that are sent are copies of the warning letters that were sent to them after their second absence from a RAC meeting, which has been one of the big problems with the Recreation Advisory Commission, is getting members who are going to come to meetings. So that's a very important element, I think, that needs to be included in the rules, and that's why we addressed it earlier. that's why we addressed it early on. And we did have enough members at our last meeting in order to conduct business. Now, if the City Council and the mayor approves our requests for the appointment terminations, we will be down four members. There'll be four member vacancies to fill. But we do have several applicants who we have contacted, we've also interviewed several of them in our meetings, and they've indicated a willingness and ability to fulfill the responsibilities of RAC members. So at our next meeting in December, we will be discussing with them and agreeing on applications to recommend for RAC appointments by the mayor and the city council, which can hopefully be filled, so that the start of the year, we'll have at least two more members on the board.
Were you at our 5:00 meeting? You weren't there, were you?
Yes, I was.
At our work session? You were there. So you know that we're working on all our boards and commissions right now, and we kind of revamping everything we have, and in the next two weeks, everybody in the council is going to put their input to Melissa. And so what we'll do is, and some of your things here may or may not jive with what we're doing at our level, but we're trying to get all the boards and commissions to look alike as best as they can with rules and regulations, because today we have a hodgepodge. So if you will let us just take this, we'll give this to Melissa, incorporate your comments and your thoughts, and see where they align with ours and what we're trying to do, and we can have more conversation on what, but to do this tonight, we're not prepared to do it.
And I was unaware that you were also going to come with your proposal this evening, and I would appreciate seeing a copy of it, so that perhaps we can.
Melissa can give you a copy of that, and knowing that as they draft and they work in progress, right? So because different council members have different opinions of even that draft. So we'll continue to work on, our hope is, and what we're trying to do is have that resolved by the year end, so that we start next year fresh with rules and policy and regulations for all the boards.
Great.
So we'll take this, add it to what we got, and we'll be back in touch, and feel free to contact Melissa if you have any questions or anything like that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for all you do. Anybody else want to speak? You're not coming to speak, are you, yet? Because you already spoke. Good. Have a good night. All right, anybody else want to speak? If not, we're going to close the public hearing, public comment period, and we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, your consent agenda consists of items I through P that we had discussed earlier. Again, consent agenda, items I through P.
I thought we were, sir, I thought we were moving item I.
Item I, the only thing we were talking about that, we talked about bringing you more back later. Item I was the.
The change order.
It was a change order, but that was for later, so all your approval is what was in the agenda, and it was the original piece, and then we bring back a change order to you in December for you to consider that.
Okay, December 4th, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, so you have the consent agenda before you for action.
Move to the doubt.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Local?
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am?
Mayor Gretchen Hearn.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway.
Yes.
Councilmember Statez.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, consent agenda's approved, the next item is either requiring individual action, item Q.
Mayor and Council, I didn't intend to re-present all of it. You did discuss this earlier about the change of ordinance or update of our ordinance for our parades, the ordinance 98.80. We did modify from what was in the agenda package to have a different definition for a parade. They really removed the number of people required, more just the discussion of what the event is, and that it did designate, or I guess continue, the police department to be the place that will issue the permit for the parade. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address it, but it was put there for your consideration to adopt that ordinance.
Is there a motion to approve item Q?
Move to.
Is there a second?
Move to approve item Q.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposing? Motion carries. City Mayor, report.
Mayor and Council, just two things, well, really, three things. One, we recognize Chief Wayley, and I just want to thank him again for his service to the community. I want to mention Julie Metz, our Downtown Development Office, spoke at a National League of Cities Conference, which is a national conference that moves around the country. It happened to be in Charlotte last week, but I will tell you, my opinion, you represented Goldsboro and your downtown very well. People from across the country were extremely impressed about what's going on here in Goldsboro, and Julie represented us very well, so I just want to commend her for that. And then just say happy thanks to the community. It is a happy time for most, but also remind everybody to look after their friends and neighbors and coworkers, because for some, it's a different year, they've lost a loved one, they're in a different life situation, and for those people, it tends to be a very sad time of year. So I want to say happy Thanksgiving to all, but please ask each other to look after those that are around them, and that's all I have this evening.
Mr. Manager? I mean, attorney?
No, of course not.
Ms. Aco.
Just happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Drive safe, keep your speed limit under control, and don't drink and drive.
Ms. Foster?
Yes, I would like to make a motion. We spoke earlier about getting the city more involved with social media and everything, and I think it would be a nice thing for us to go live in our work sessions. City of Chesapeake, Virginia does it already, it's a few other cities that do it. I think it'd be a way, because most of our citizens can't get here at 5:00 o'clock, they get off work at 5:00, they have to get their kids, and it's surprising how many people actually are watching right now, and I think it'd be great for us to go live in our work sessions. So I would like to make a motion to go live in our work session.
I second that I believe in transparency. I think that our citizens definitely, you know, they want to be here, but they're unable to be here, and I think that if they get a chance to see how, you know, we operate as a team, that, you know, they'll get a chance to get more involved and more input.
There's no reason we cannot do that technology-wise, I mean, no different than, I mean, do we have the setup to do that? Or if not, can we arrange it to get the setup to do it?
I think we can get it arranged to get you set up. I don't know if we'd have it by your next meeting or not. You can put a camera over in the corner, the problem becomes the audio and hearing and really transmitting that to a point that it makes sense on the other end, but I need to talk with our IT staff, and it may not be a huge issue other than mics and getting the mics back to a central point. So it may not be a big deal, but we'd work towards that if that's what you ask us to do.
Any more discussion on that?
Okay, well, I'll, Mr. Aco just asked me to delay it until we find out from IT. I don't have a problem with that. If we can have some answers within the next two weeks, by December 4th meeting, I can.
That's what we're doing. We'll just go ahead in a second. See if we can do that.
I mean, even to give them time, you know, we push it for the first of the years. It doesn't have to be anything right now. I understand that, it takes time.
All right. All right, Ms. Hearn?
No comment.
Mark?
Just happy Thanksgiving and be safe and God bless.
Rowan?
I'd like to congratulate you, Wayley, again, and thank Mr. George Williams.
Yes.
He did a fantastic thing that he did, and also, as Thanksgiving is coming up, think of our deployed military, think of our policemen. They don't, they don't get to eat turkey. They have to be out there all the time, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, sir. Got the opportunity to go to Charlotte for our League of Cities, it was great, got a chance to go to a lot of seminars, got educated, got a chance to see how other cities work when it comes to summer employment programs, and each year, they get bigger and better. Me and the mayor, actually, we were in the same seminar, and we got to see how the city, how the local businesses pull together in order to help our youth, how they mentor them, and you see a change in inner-city kids just from them having an opportunity to work. So I definitely want, you know, if you work with someone, and you have a good rapport with your company, to reach out to the city, reach out to the mayor, bother him, bother me, and let's get some kids working this summer. Let's get more than 60 kids working. And also, I want to send out my condolences to the Benton family and the Darden family. We had another tragic loss in our city due to gun violence, and we got to work on that, we really do. We have to, we have to call it out. When we hear about things about to happen, it's going to take a young person's life, we need to figure it out, we need to call someone, we need to, we need to just get in the middle of it and tell them stop. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I got some lengthy comments tonight, but just really quick, I do want to comment on that we did, several of us went to National League of Cities, but I want to tell you some of the seminars we went to, because there were really some really good seminars. Race relations and advancing racial equity in your community. Summer youth program, as Councilman Williams, opioid epidemic, 65,000 people a year are dying. It's not as much a problem in Goldsboro, but the bigger cities are having even a more of a problem, but it's still something we got to pay attention to, because it's here too. Youth councils and how they energize your city, a lot of work on youth councils, and the biggest one that I really think we got to focus on, and there are people doing this here, but I don't know how hard or at what level, is early childhood education, because that is our future. But I want to read something to you real quick, and this comes from Lena, and Lena's a think tank that works on early childhood education, but it says, and I didn't even know this, which is not surprising, I guess, "The 0-2-3 age window is a critical time to improve school readiness. During this period, the child's brain grows to 80% of adult size and builds more than 1 million neural connections per second. Research shows that increasing the spoken language is key to brain stimulation." So basically, what they're saying is, and especially in the low-wealth communities, that the kids aren't getting talked to enough by their parents, they're not spending enough time having good quality, and there's a lot of work on that, and it's, they're saying that, and as we know here in Wayne County, at kindergarten, half the kids are not ready for kindergarten. At third grade, 60% of our kids don't read or write at grade level. So we have a huge problem here, and it's not just Wayne County and Goldsboro, I understand that, but the only way this problem's going to get fixed is if our community fixes it. The city's not going to fix it, the county's not going to fix it, and the schools aren't going to fix it. Our community has got to get into this. So you'll hear a lot more from me, and you'll hear a lot more coming up. I'm trying to get a little smarter on exactly where we are. Dr. Taylor has a group with Donna Phillips at the library, working really diligently on this. The United Way is starting a program, so there's a lot of people working on it, but we got to make this a priority and get these kids ready for school. So early childhood education, I think you'll hear a lot about that. As everybody did, I want to wish everybody a happy, happy Thanksgiving, I want you to stay safe, and if you can, help anybody out, please do, because there are a lot of people in our community still in need, and anything you can do is a great thing to help somebody. I do want to mention that we had an our community cares this past Saturday, most of us couldn't be there, but I understand it was well-attended, I just want to thank all the volunteers, it was at WA Foster, so I appreciate all the kids that went, and I appreciate all those adults that support it, and we need to just keep things like this going on. I do want to say that with the holidays coming up, anything we can do, we got a lot of visitors coming to our city, anything we can do to keep litter picked up, to not put litter down there to start with would be even better, but we need to work on the cleanliness of our city the next couple of months, that would be really nice. I do want to encourage everybody, everybody speaks to start shopping, you need to shop local, it might be your neighbor or your son's or your daughter's job somewhere, I know it's so easy to buy on the internet now, and it's so easy to get in the car and go to Raleigh or Greenville, whatever, but anything you can buy local makes a difference in our community to our stores. So I do want to encourage you to shop local. I do want to remind everybody that we're having lights up downtown tomorrow night, about 5:00 o'clock, I think it starts, it'll be a really good crowd, really big, so we hope everybody would come. Our parade is December 2nd, our Christmas parade, I want to encourage everybody to come downtown to the Christmas parade. And I want to close out with this, and I just, and I'm really, from the bottom of my heart, really proud to be able to say this, but when I walked out of our briefing tonight, somebody said to me, "What's in the water tonight?" And I went, "Well, I don't know, what do you mean, what's in the water tonight?" Well, everybody was cordial tonight, everybody was very polite, and we all worked like a team tonight, and I don't know what happened tonight to make it any different, but I want to thank each of my council members, and I appreciate everybody's effort. We had a great work session tonight, it was very cordial, we all got along, we all asked the tough questions, but we all were very respectful of everybody else, and that's the way we ought to be working all the time. So I just want to thank my fellow council members, I think it's a great way to end our meeting tonight, and I appreciate everybody for what they do. Thank you, and we stand adjourned.